Good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education to have a motion to open a meeting. Laurie, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Okay, we're going to jump into executive session to discuss some personnel matters. We'll be back out at 7:30, right? 7:30? Yeah, 7:30 for the regular session. Do I have a motion to enter executive session? Laurie, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Okay, great. See you in a little bit. All right, good evening again. Today is Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. It's a regular meeting of the Board of Education. We actually already opened the meeting at 6:30 and went into executive session, so we don't have to open the meeting. It's already been done. So we'll move on to our next item, which is, should be pledge of allegiance. Yes. All right. Also, I apologize to all of you for being a little bit late. Our executive session went a little long. Sorry about that. We'll try and make up some ground. So our first item is our presentation on the budget. This is the last regular meeting that we're going to have before the budget vote, so it's important to sort of, you know, go over all this one more time.
We have a budget hearing.
Oh, we have a hearing next. Okay, this is our last regular meeting. Right, yeah, okay. We do have a hearing meeting after this, but this is the last regular meeting before that, before the election, so.
Please stay at the adoption.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board President Kassen, Vice President Laura Benke is not here tonight, but are all our other trustees and our school community. Tonight, I present a summary of our proposed budget for adoption by the Board of Education. Tonight, for those of you who have been watching, I am giving a summarized version of the budget as the last five board meetings have reflected a more in-depth version. I have discussed the budget and its associated programs, which it supports in previous workshops where administrators have also presented. Tonight, I will give a condensed version of that information, but I want to remind everyone that all the presentations are available on our website and the corresponding week of those presentations, they've been available in the TUCO happenings. If you're interested in learning more, I encourage you to watch the recorded workshops on our website. This will be much shorter because I know the board has sat through an hour, hours of presentations, and so has the community. So as you look up there, those are the district's mission and strategic goals, and driving our work is this mission to prepare every student for excellence. And as we talked about at every meeting, that the strategic plan drives everything that we do. It's the foundation of our budget, and our budget aligns to these four critical areas. I have read this slide many times, but these are really our points of pride. We have a wonderful faculty. We have wonderful fine arts programs and our one-to-one ratio of our technology, cutting edge in so many areas. And now we also can add to all of that, the universal pre-K program. I think that we are pretty much the only suburban district in our area that has decided to find a way to ensure that we have free preschool for all our four-year-olds. But again, it's a process. It's a process of how you get in. It's a lottery process. But so far, we have not had to turn anyone away. And all of these points of pride is what makes our community so special and so successful. And now we can build on the students' accomplishments in academics, athletics, arts, and extracurriculars. So as I said last week, I continue to add these incredible colleges to the list of colleges that this class of 2023 just heard from and then got into. So we have kids who got into Princeton, Wash U. We just heard about Johns Hopkins, just to name a few. And you see the rest of them up there. Our kids are achieving at such high levels. In athletics and extracurriculars also. As you know, our kids have won so many honorifics in sports and also awards in clubs like debate team or science olympiad. Our arts program are off the charts. As anyone who has seen our school play and has gone to any of our concerts, and very soon, in a couple of weeks, we will also have our art show, and we will showcase the fine artists that we have. Our teachers and staff are caring and supportive. And if you watched our last two presentations, you will see them in action. And I recommend that you do because they are incredible. Finally, we have many state-of-the-art programs in academics, including science-based reading, which again, last week, we got a jump start on it. We were ahead of the curve of everybody looking at how to best teach reading and also our project-based learning. We are TUCO proud, always. And these incredible accomplishments of our students guide our budget planning on continuous improvement. We also consider enrollment and class sizes when budget planning. I've gone over these charts numerous times too. You'll see here, Cottle enrollment remains consistent with small class size. Our budget supports that, as does our middle school budget and our high school. We take pride in presenting a budget that prioritizes small class size. Over the past few weeks, we have presented some budget additions and subtractions. Total changes at William E. Cottle come to approximately $19,000. Those are the curriculum changes. These include resources, again, for early literacy, so very important, high-quality and engaging texts for our older readers, and updated science equipment for more rigorous instruction for our fifth graders. Changes at the middle school and high school for curriculum totals approximately $12,000. These also include investments in a more rigorous science education and additional materials for our ELA curriculum. And again, this was spoken about at many of our workshops. Changes in professional learning, professional development. We proposed additions to our budget line items in professional learning that promote project-based learning at the middle school and high school and curriculum development, and also for our new rigorous and engaging elective courses that we propose for next year. These changes total approximately $23,000. Changes in staffing. In previous presentations, I walked through each role of the district-wide chart to demonstrate the impact of our reductions, our proposed reductions, and our proposed additions for the full-time equivalent, which we call FTE. That's a full-time teacher. In summary, the proposed budget includes an additional .33 FTE with the additions and the subtractions to allow for, but it allows for a lot. Additional special education offerings, new electives, an additional kindergarten section, and more AIS and support for our students. This is less than, a .5 would be a half, less than a half of a teacher. The next slide, right here, shows a total proposed change of approximately $5,000 in extracurricular, allowing for an additional art club for our Cottle Cubs, as I said in other workshops. The after-school art program had so many people wanting it that there were waiting lists. A high school debate team. As you know, the middle school debate team was, the kids were so excited and they did so well that we want to move it to high school. An additional STEM equipment for our technology-focused clubs that also do so well. Meanwhile, an additional $27,000 allows us to provide replacement Chromebooks for three grade levels, which we also were one of the first to do, and complete our transition away from ARM-based projectors, which are really old-fashioned in this world of technology, and provide replacement, more replacements with interactive whiteboards in the school building. Now we also have one-time reductions. And I remember when we presented this budget last year and the budget members, Mr. Kassen, saying, "Well, this is one time, right?" And, you know, some districts aren't aware that, you know, you put something in the budget, it doesn't mean you have to keep on continuing what you're doing. So on the 2022-23 budget, included amounts for these one-time non-recurring expenses. These are not included in the 2023 budget and are not replaced in the 2023 budget. These include furniture purchases for new spaces and initiatives, a wireless upgrade project that is currently underway, and our one-time textbook and curriculum purchases. Total reductions of one-time expenses is $296,000. That's a negative $296,000 for us. So in total, with all the changes to support the advancement of our strategic plan, we are showing a net reduction of minus $152,391 to these areas that were discussed in previous board meetings and workshops. I now invite Ms. Faith Sparks to come up and provide us a summary of the accounting and financials.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. So in summary, the proposed budget for the 2324 school year is $40,113,000, $113,060. A percentage increase of 4.94% or $1,887,559. The proposed tax levy is $31,237,172. This is a tax levy increase of 2.74% or $833,190. This increase is below the legal tax cap limit based on the state comptroller's formula, keeping $500,000 in the pockets of our taxpayers. When we look at revenues, real property taxes are our largest revenue item. So as I mentioned before, we are below the tax cap at 2.74%. We switch gears to foundation aid. Now, the state has passed its third budget extender. They have not reached an agreement on the state budget. So this budget extender extends through Thursday, April 20th. We are still working off the summary of the governor's proposed budget, which is a foundation aid increase of $913,000, approximately 37.88%. When the 2122 budget was enacted, it included law that districts that receive 10% or a 10% or $10 million increase to their foundation aid seek public comment on how these funds are used. As we've done in the past two years, we sent out a survey just to gain public comment. This survey is in our happening, so keep an eye out for it. This slide is a summary of our revenues. And once again, the real property tax cap is $500,000 below the legal limit. You will notice that the last item on this slide is a reduction to appropriated fund balance. So even though we're not going to the cap, we are happy to say that we are not increasing appropriated fund balance, and we still are on track to decrease that number. We do have some other revenues that are projected to increase. One of them, our biggest one, is interest income. So while we did increase the budget for interest income next year, it is not as high as we are projecting to end this year. So I'll cover that a little later because interest income is, it fluctuates. If we go to our next slide, the summary of our expenditure budget. Again, 4.94%. We've had in-depth discussions about the different drivers, such as salary increases per collective bargaining agreements, the cost of benefits, including health insurance and pensions, rising costs of utilities and the maintenance of our building, large increases in transportation, as this year we had to go out to bid for all our 2324 transportation services, and the numbers came back very high. Our school district is not immune to inflationary pressures and increased costs of labor. This budget does reflect a reduction in a number of one-time expenses that were specific to the current school year and not be recurring. So this shows a summary of our budget-to-budget change by expenditure category. Next, we have a chart that shows the budget in three parts: administrative, program, and capital. The administrative budget refers to the portion of the budget that covers expenses related to the day-to-day management and administration of the school, such as the superintendent's office, the business office, legal fees. The program part of our budget is important. It outlines the resources and funding allocated for academic and extracurricular programs within the school. This portion of the budget is essential for providing educational opportunities and resources to students to help them succeed in their academic pursuits and prepare them for the future. The program part of our budget covers a wide range of academic and extracurricular programs. And the last section is the capital portion of our budget. It's the part of the budget that's allocated to improvements, operation, and maintenance of school facilities, and includes costs of construction, renovation, maintenance of buildings, and other physical infrastructure. So you can see the largest part is our capital. Our, I'm sorry, our program, not our capital. Although we do spend a lot on capital, but that's that. The next chart is, it shows our tax levy and budget history. The black line you'll see is our percent levy increase going back to the 2018-19 school year, and it's pretty steady, hovering around 2.3% average. Next is, we'll discuss a contingency budget. This chart shows what our funding would be under a contingency budget. If the budget were to be defeated and the district had to go to a contingency budget, the tax levy would be held at the 2223 school year level, which would mean $833,190 in cuts. This is the time of year where we review in detail where we think we'll end the year. This slide shows our projected revenues and expenses and projected ending fund balance for the current school year. It also shows a breakdown of our reserve funds at the top of the chart. As we look closely at our 2223 estimated revenues and expenses, we see we are anticipating a surplus of approximately $670,000. This puts us in a favorable position for year-end. We continue to monitor and refine these projections as we move closer to the year-end. Some of the drivers behind this surplus are sales tax revenue coming in higher than budgeted, non-resident special education tuition revenue, and interest earnings. Interest earnings being the largest of the favorable variances. While the Fed has continued to raise interest rates, we are still conservative, and we will not know, we know that it will not continue in perpetuity. We anticipate interest earnings this year to come in approximately $360,000 over the budget of $15,000. But to put interest earnings into perspectives, our interest earnings for last school year was $25,841 and $20,914 the year before. So we did increase the interest earnings revenue budget for next year, but not fully up to where we project we'll end this year as we don't know what the Fed's going to do. And it's not, rates are not going to continue to rise in perpetuity. Next, I'd like to discuss a long-range financial plan that the district developed and will be posted on our website. Long-range financial planning can provide numerous benefits to our district. It's a plan that outlines the expected financial performance. We'll now review in a very high level the results of this newly-developed long-range financial plan. Multi-year planning can be a vital tool for local governments. It allows decision-makers to set long-term priorities and work towards goals. In developing a five-year long-range plan, we are able to see how decisions today might impact our future and impact our ability to sustain or add instructional programming. Plans are not static documents. As with our annual budget, multi-year plans must be tracked and updated regularly in order to accurately guide policy decisions. This plan was reviewed with our wonderful and amazing finance committee. The document containing our plan includes a variety of information about our district, including historical information about revenue and expenditure performances, fund balance, enrollment, and wealth measures of our district. A long-range financial plan projects revenues and expenses for several years into the future using assumptions that are based on historical trends and projected conditions. There are limitations to this plan since broad estimates and assumptions are used throughout the future years. And as we look out into the future, our projections become less reliable the further out we go. Rather than focusing on specific dollar amounts projected, it's important to recognize future trends. This is an important concept because it's a certainty that future years will be affected to varying degrees of impact by unknowing factors such as changes to state and federal legislation, changes to programs, changes to collective bargaining agreements, changes to enrollment, planned and unforeseen capital needs, and economic conditions. And we can add pandemics to that, too. That's something we can't project. It should not be alarming if future funding gaps are anticipated. As referenced in New York State's Multi-Year Financial Planning Guide, most plans have them. A conservative approach is applied to projections, which does not contemplate future count and balancing measures. That will be applied. Each year, a balanced budget is adopted by the Board of Education, but oftentimes is achieved by finding efficiencies and making cuts or reductions. A sound long-range financial plan can help decision-makers and voters understand the issues facing the district in the coming years, allowing them to plan and implement necessary changes. This slide shows the tax cap projection going out for the next five years, where we think it will be. With real property taxes making up the largest part of our budget, we look ahead at what the tax cap will look like. Here you'll see our projection for the next five years. There are two factors in this projection that are provided to us by the state: CPI, which is based on the rate of inflation, and the tax-based growth factor. Many of these, many things impact these factors, and without a crystal ball, we do our best to try to project where we think they'll fall. With inflation being so high for quite some time, we use 2% to project out CPI going forward. For the tax-based growth factor, we were conservative, going forward with a lower number than this year at 1.0050. This is based on brick-and-mortar growth, and we are not a very industrialized district that has a lot of room for new building and development. So we are conservative with this number. The other factors of this calculation are debt payments, state building aid payments that relate to the debt, and pilot payments. These are more, we can easily estimate these. Based on what we are projecting, we have, we are proposing 2.74% increase for next year. And you'll see there's, it's $500,000 below the allowable amount. And for the year after at 2.57%, 1.29%, 1.28%, and .18% for the last year. We are constantly monitoring trends, and we'll update these estimates as needed throughout the year and during the next budget cycle. This is a very high-level overview of the results of the long-range financial plan. There are assumptions made, these are assumptions made at a single point in time and are subject to change. For revenues, we've had large increases in state aid as the governor, the past three years as the governor has been phasing in foundation aid. The 2324 school year, we will be fully funded. So going forward, we are projecting only conservative, small increases of about 3%. We're not going to be getting 37% each year because we will be fully phased in as of the end of next school year. Other local revenues, we are conservatively projecting at 2% going forward. Salary increases vary from 2% to 3.5% as a result of percentage increases and step increases. Health insurance estimates are about 5% going forward. BOCs and contractual costs, we are projecting 2%. Transportation, we are projecting 5% over the 2324 budget, which increased significantly. For retirement contributions, our projections show slight increases for future years. And debt is easy to project as we know our amortization schedules. So projected budget increases average approximately 3.2% over the next five years. This plan will provide a roadmap for our district's financial health and sustainability over an extended period. It will help us align our financial goals with our educational goals, plan for the future, and ensure our resources are utilized in a sustainable manner. We will be posting this plan to our website.
A budget is the reflection of a district's values. This proposed budget captures our innovation and commitment to our students. Highlights of our budget includes favorable class sizes, innovative professional learning for our faculty and staff, increased PBL opportunities, enhanced early literacy instruction, increased rigor in our science teaching, additional curriculum for our secondary-level ELA readers and writers, additional extracurriculars, and exciting new electives. Our proposals are linked directly to our strategic plan and helps propel our district forward in our mission. We are approaching the end of our budget calendar. Look how much, look how many workshops and meetings we've had. After tonight's adoption, if the board adopts the budget, we will hold a hearing at our next meeting on May 8th. Please mark your calendars for the date, May 16th, 2023, our annual vote and trustee election. This information available on our homepage and polling locations and hours. This presentation is a collaboration between the Board of Education. Their hard work and collaboration. I thank the board for their leadership, partnership, and high standards. I thank our business manager, Ms. Faith Sparks, for her thoughtful, diligent, and fiscally-responsive work. She has her eye on what is best for our students and our long-term economic stability, as you saw with her long-range planning. Thank you to our district and building administrators, who contributed to previous presentations and whose work is represented in our final budget proposal this evening. Thank you to our wonderful faculty and staff for their hard work and dedication. And thank you to the students for their love of learning and the joy they bring to our work as public educators. We really do have amazing students here. And thank you to our community. This community comes out and cheers our students in all their endeavors. Your support, you support our educators and our leaders. You get involved and invest in the success of our district. It's no wonder why people are moving to TUCO. This double rainbow that's shown over our new Cottle field the evening before our ribbon-cutting represents success, transformation, and utility, and unity. This, in essence, is symbolic of the light TUCO shines as we continue to lead the way. To the community, please come out and vote on Tuesday, May 16th. I am now happy to open the floor to any discussions or questions. Thank you.
So I guess I, did we speak, right? So the May 8th budget hearing is also a regular meeting? It's a regular meeting, May 8th?
May 8th is a workshop.
It's a workshop, okay. So, all right. Workshop, and then that'll include the final presentation and hearing. Okay, great. All right. Thank you for that. That was a more abbreviated version of the, no, no, I mean, I'm joking around. I know, the last one was a little. But if anyone wants more details about what's in this budget in terms of substance, I encourage you to go back and look at the previous presentations because there was a lot, a lot of substance in there. So there's a lot in this budget in terms of substance and moving the district closer to our strategic goals. So I just wanted to highlight, I think, a really important point that was, that Faith, Ms. Sparks mentioned, but I think is very important to highlight for the community, is that this levy increase that we're proposing is $500,000 less than what we can, what we're allowed to ask for, as per the tax cap limit. So that's a really important point because, you know, we understand as much as the district is facing inflationary pressures, so are our community members, obviously. And also, we know we've asked a lot of the community too in recent period for capital improvement bonds and things of that nature. So we, this board thought it was important to do what we can to alleviate that tax burden as much as possible. And I think hats off to Ms. Sparks and Dr. Goodman for making that happen and utilizing fund balance, but still keeping that fund balance projection going in a downward way, which was good, and utilizing some of the excesses and just being responsible, I think, in a way that we could get what we need without, by having the least amount of burden on the taxpayers. So I think a $500,000 less levy increase than we're allowed to ask for, I think is really worth noting. It's important, so, so very good there. So that's all I had. Anybody else have any questions or discussion on the board? No? I know, we've been through this discussion many times. So we're, this is really more for the community. We've been involved in this all the way through, so we're comfortable where it is. So, okay. So what I'll do now is I'll go into the first recognition of the audience, and then this way, if anyone has, wants to speak about this presentation or ask any questions about it, or that this is the time to do it. Let me just remind everyone, too, of our public speaking rules. I always like to do that, and sometimes I'm not very good at policing it. I sometimes don't back Robin up when she tries to, tries to properly enforce our very important protocols here. So let me just remind everybody, we have a three-minute limit on speaking. This goes for the This is, goes for the first recognition and also the, the, one at the end for any topics at all. We don't speak about individual students or, or staff members or anyone from the district that's, you know, individually, and we obviously keep it cordial. And also, just to remind everyone that, you know, it's not a back-and-forth. This is comment period. You, you say what you want to say. You can ask a question, but please don't expect a response right now. We, it's your time to speak. We, we just listen, and then at the end of the comment periods, we may say something in response, and if you have any questions, you can always email them or ask by board hours. But it's not a back-and-forth discussion, and we've made that mistake in the past. I just want to kind of reaffirm those rules. Okay. With that, first recognition of the audience, do we have anybody? Ms. Hallen?
I'm Allison Halloran, the Tocco PTA Vice President, presenting on behalf of the PTA. The spring is traditionally a busy time for the PTA, and this year is no exception. This past month, we held the Cottle Bingo Night. We had an assembly called Dancing Around the World at Cottle. We partnered with the middle school to help with the cost of the seventh and eighth-grade trip to Boston. We also hosted a group event at the Yankee game this past Sunday, and yesterday, we had our PTA blood drive. Thank you so much for letting us host that in our gym. Looking forward, April 20th, we have our PTA General Meeting. We have a presentation from the Maxwell Institute called Hidden in Plain Sight. We really encourage everyone to come out and listen to this important presentation on drug and alcohol abuse prevention. On April 26th, we have the Tocco Middle School and Tocco High School Taste of Tocco Lunch. This is a really fun event, and the kids absolutely love it. Friday, Sept, Friday, April 28th, Friday, April 28th, is our annual Spring Social. This is our biggest fundraiser of the year. We are so happy to finally have it back. The last time we were able to have our Spring Social was 2019, and we were all geared up and ready to go at 2020, and it needed to be canceled two weeks before because of COVID. So we are so excited to finally have, have it back. For those of you who don't know what Spring Social is, it's a super fun evening for the adults of our school community. We have a buffet dinner and some cocktails, and there's a DJ, and of course, our really great, fabulous raffle prizes. It's just a really, really fun night, and we hope that everyone comes out to support it. Tickets are on sale now, and they're going fast. We hope to see everybody there. Lastly, we are starting the process of looking for volunteers for our executive board for next year, so if you have an interest in joining our PTA board and volunteering with us, please drop us an email at tuccohptanom, that's tuccohptanom@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hallen.
Excuse my voice, I was just screaming at two lacrosse games for Tocco University, which we won, by the way. By the way, I just want to say hats off to the senior class. They have amazing schools. I, the schools that I've heard, it's just like, we should be pounding our chests to the parents of Cottle, the middle school, letting them know how great our school is so for retention, for students to stay in this district, because it's like, to see these schools, I'd like, we should be putting banners up, like, seriously, on the football field or like down at Cottle, because it's something that historically you haven't seen in years. The budget, by the way, sorry about my voice, great job. Just a couple of questions. I mean, not every kid's going to go to an amazing school, so my question is, I, I think when I read some of the line items, one of them was a cut in BOCs. It went from $90,000 in 2020, 2021, went to $0. It's $40,000 now in '22, and $40,000 going forward. So like, if a kid now wants to go to BOCs and be an electrician or a plumber, and I mean, I know my electrician probably makes more than guys in finance, right? And so do some plumbers, right? How are we going to get these kids into BOCs when there's only $40,000 in a budget to send a kid that maybe doesn't want to go to Wake Forest or Yale, right? And he's a trades, you know, he's a trade school. It's a very important thing I think we need to look at, and I don't know, just get your thoughts on why the budget was decreased from 90. And then another question is, where did that money go in '21 that was $0? Where did that get filtered to? And how do we help kids now with only a $40,000 budget for them this year and next year going forward? That's my question.
Good. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? Okay. Did you want to address any of those questions now?
Well, I would real, I would really have to look at that because there's different lines for the BOCs budget. I don't know which one you're looking at, if you're looking at ACED or if you're, BOCs budget has gone down significantly. The big part of the BOCs budget, because we brought more kids into our district instead of sending them out of district, as we've developed programs in district. You're right, there is not a lot of money for ACED. It's not necessarily a direction we went in right now. I understand what you're saying. I know the board has talked about it in the past, and it's something that we can look at. It is, you know, costly, it's something we can think about, but also, kids have to do that, plus they have to do the high school program, and we do have the entrepreneurship, and we also have the senior elective to get them started in that. So, you know, the state is thinking, by the way, Mr. Bogetti, of changing the graduation requirements, which we're hoping that they do. There's a work group looking at that, that some kids can really have a true vocational path and not have to take, you know, all of these other regents, which is, which is taxing on a kid that might just want to get their vocational degree. So there's all these new pathways that are coming up, and one of the things I said, because I went to one of these meetings, I said, you know, for districts who don't have money in this budget now, and if you start opening that up, please keep in mind that you need to give these districts somewhere to go to if kids can really get that degree and not have to get the full region's degree. And our commissioner, she did say, absolutely, so we can only hope that that would happen. But I do think in the next couple of years that we're going to see a different pathway for kids to take. You're right, a lot of electricians are doing a lot better than a lot of other people right now. We see that as we're doing our new facility here. So thank you for that comment.
All right. Thank you. All right, we're going to move into business of the board. I'm sorry, our next item is consent agenda. We're going to do that first. So I have, so I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 2 through 3. Need a motion? Cynthia, second. Teraz, any discussion about these items? All in favor? Okay, great. Business of the board, couple items here. Resolve that the Tocco Union Free School District, District's 2023-2024 Proposed Budget be set at $40,113,060, and that this proposed budget be voted on by the community at the annual meeting on May 16th, 2023, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz. So this is obviously our official adoption of this budget as a board to get it on the ballot. We've discussed it quite a bit, so. All in favor? Next, approve a property tax report card. Resolve that the Board of Education, Tocco Union Free School District, approve the property tax report card for the 2023-2024 school year, and authorize the business manager to submit into the state education, submitted to the State Education Department, excuse me. Have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, any discussion on this? All in favor? Great. Okay. Next, approve a tax anticip, anticipate note. Tax anticipation note resolution of Tocco Union Free School District, New York, adopted April 18th, 2023, authorizing the issuance of not-to-exceed $2 million tax anticipation notes in anticipation of the receipt of taxes to be levied for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, any discussion on this? All in favor? Great. Next, adopt the Southern Westchester BOCs 2023-2024 Budget. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District approves the 2023-2024 Estimated Administrative Budget for the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Education Service, Educational Services in the amount of $12,812,124. Tocco's share is $166,716. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Great. Next is approve BOCs trustees for Southern Westchester. Motion that one vote be cast for Eileen Miller, Nyleesh Jane, and Cheryl Brady to serve as trustees on the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Education, Educational Services for the time period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Approve a budget, budget amendment. Resolve that the Board of Education of Tocco Union Free School District approves a budget amendment related, related to the Tocco High School gym floor insurance claim to increase the general fund revenue budget line A2680 insurance recoveries by $34,142.79, and to increase general fund appropriate budget line A1620 dot 160 dot dash 00 dash 0100, custodial overtime by $2,028, and to increase the general fund appropriate appropriation budget line A1621 dot 434, maintenance emergency repairs by $32,114.79. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Cynthia, any discussion on this? Did you want to say anything about this, Ms. Sparks, or is this pretty straightforward?
Yeah, so when we had the insurance claim for our gym floor, it was covered by insurance, so there were some costs that we had to pay out that we didn't budget for, but they were reimbursed by insurance. So in order to pay them out, we have to increase our budget, our revenue and expenditure budget, budget, so that we can do that.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay. All in favor? All right, great. And then we have another budget amendment. Resolve that the Board of Education of Tocco Union Free School District approves budget amendment related to the Tocco High School water pipe break insurance claim to increase the general fund revenue budget line A2680 insurance recoveries by $11,496.87, and to increase the general fund appropriation budget line A1621 dot 434, maintenance emergency repairs by $11,496.87. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Cynthia, any discussion? This is generally the same thing, just for the word.
For a different event.
Right. All in favor? Okay. And then we have one more. Approve a budget amendment. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District approves a budget amendment related to the William E. Cottle Tree Lim Insurance Claim to increase the general fund revenue budget line A2680 insurance recoveries by $3,687.98, to increase the general fund appropriation budget line A1621 dot 423, maintenance contract masonry and roof by $2,687.98, and to increase the general fund appropriation budget line A1621 dot 440, maintenance grounds and fields by $1,000. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Cynthia, all in favor? That one's pretty straightforward, I think. So now we have a series of contract awards, which are related to our new capital bond project. So before we go into these, Ms. Sparks, would you mind just giving us an update on where we are with contract, why, why we're, we're doing these resolutions tonight on the contract awards?
Yes. So we, once the bond was approved, we moved forward and went out to bid for the work that was already approved by SCD that we were unable to award the last time. So the bids were opened on April 6th, and we had a base bid and two alternates. We are awarding the base bid only tonight, which is the Cottle Cafeteria, and it also includes some upgrade, upgrades to all the fire alarm systems in Cottle, and some work to fix the corridor ceilings and some lighting at Cottle, and the single occupancy toilet rooms. The bids for HVAC came back too high, and we were unable to award them at this time, but they will be revisited. So right now, just to get the project moving and to get the work done at Cottle this summer, we are awarding that base bid that will include the Cottle Cafeteria, the toilet rooms, and there are some other things in there, like the fire alarm systems.
Right. So we have to, you know, we had a facilities committee meeting this week also to discuss the, you know, what, the, the high bids that came back and what we're going to do next, and then we're still waiting for, to get to the point where we can go out and bid for the middle school, high school work.
Yes, they're, they're still in the design phase for the middle school, high school work, so that'll be designed, and it'll go up to SCD, and we'll have a timeline on when that will go to SCD and then go out for bid, and that work will happen next summer.
Okay, great. Thank you for that update. So the next four resolutions are going to be contract awards, so that you'll hear me read, and they're all associated with the work that's going to be done at the new Cottle Cafeteria. Okay. So first one is, be resolved that upon recommendation of the district's architect and construction manager, the board hereby awards the contract for the general construction work for the district's capital improvement project related to alterations to Cottle Elementary School to APS Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $1,192,000, subject to the execution of a contract by APS Contracting Incorporated in a form approved by the district superintendent and legal counsel, and the provision by APS Contracting Incorporated of all required documents. Be further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the president of the board or the district superintendent of schools to execute the approved contract with APS Contracting Incorporated and such other documents as are necessary to commence the general construction work on the capital project. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Cynthia. We discussed this already, all in favor? Great. Okay. Next, contract award. Be resolved that upon recommendation of the district's architect and construction manager, the board hereby awards the contract for the plumbing work for the district's capital improvement project related to alterations to the Cottle Elementary School to Southeast Mechanical Corp. in the amount of $107,750, subject to the execution of a contract by Southeast Mechanical Corp. in a form approved by the district's superintendent and legal counsel, and the provision by Southern, I'm sorry, Southeast Mechanical Corp. of all required documents. Be further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the president of the board or the district superintendent of schools to execute the approved contract with Southeast Mechanical Corp., and such other documents as are necessary to commence the plumbing work on the capital project. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, all in favor? Another one. Be resolved that upon recommendation of the district's architecture, architect and construction manager, the board hereby awards the contract for mechanical work for the district's capital improvement project related to alterations to the Cottle Elementary School to ACS Systems Associates Incorporated in the amount of $365,000, subject to execution of a contract by ACS Systems Associates, Associates Incorporated in a form approved by the district superintendent and legal counsel, and the provision by, by ACS, provision by ACS Systems Associates Incorporated of all required documents. Be further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the president of the board or the district superintendent of schools to execute the approved contract with ACS System Associates Incorporated and such other documents as are necessary to commence the mechanical work on the capital project. Do I have a motion? Teraz, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Okay. And last, contract award. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the district's architect and construction manager, the board hereby awards a contract for electrical work for the capital, for the, sorry, for the district's capital improvement project related to alterations to Cottle Elementary School to Allstate Electrical Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $662,000, subject to the execution of a contract by Allstate Electrical Contracting Incorporated in a form approved by the district superintendent and legal counsel, and the provision by Allstate Electrical Contracting Incorporated of all required documents. Be further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the president of the board or the district superintendent of schools to execute the approved contract with Allstate Electrical Contracting Incorporated and such other documents as are necessary to commence the electrical work on the capital project. Do I have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, all in favor? Okay. All right, moving on. Accept a donation. Whereas the Tocco Union Free School District has been offered a donation of the Kakuji family in honor of Mark Kakuji in the amount of $500 for the purpose of awarding a scholarship to a Tocco High School senior who is going into the field of special education. And whereas the district would like to accept such a gift, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the gift offered by the Kakuji family in the amount of $500 in honor of Mark Kakuji for the purposes of awarding a scholarship to a 2023 Tocco High School senior who is going into the field of special education, including the fields of special education teacher, speech, occupational or physical therapist, guidance counselor, or school psychologist, and who has shown their commitment to volunteerism in helping students in need in our in helping students in need in our community. The scholarship is called the Future Educator Scholarship. Do we have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, any comment on this? Do you want to say something?
Yes. I just would like to talk a little bit about this, this very generous donation. First of all, Mark Kakuji was a student in our life skills program who exited at the end of last school year. This year, this is not the first donation, his family donated a grant in the amount of $2,000 to the special education program and an additional grant in the amount of $2,000 to the high school life skills program. And we've used that money. Ms. Gorman purchased flexible furniture with one of the grants, which has allowed students to be able to group easily in small groups, white board tops, as they could have visible learning and more. The high school life school program used the grant to purchase professional coffee maker urn and our kitchen supplies for the Tiger Bites. Anybody who doesn't know what the Tiger Bites is, you should watch, I think it was two meetings ago, but the students serve, they sell different things for us on Friday mornings, and they came with special treats for the board.
They were good. Very good.
They were really good. Now, this wonderful family is graciously donating, a recurring donation of $500 to establish a scholarship to go towards a graduating senior who intends to pursue a field in special education, including counseling and other related services. They recognize what an impact Tuckahoe has made in Mark's experience in our schools, and they want to continue to support our special education programs. We are so thankful for these most generous contributions, which we will certainly know will have a wonderful impact on our programs and support for our students who are pursuing careers in special education. I just want to say, Mark was a wonderful student, and we wish him great luck, but we, and we know he will have that because he has such a wonderful family and he has such a wonderful spirit. And, but on behalf of the Board of Education, myself, and all the special education teachers, we want to thank this family for their generous gifts to our district. Thank you.
Very well said. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Kakuji family.
Very kind and generous. Thank you.
Good idea, too. All in favor? All right, great. Next couple of items are related to some policy readings that we've been covering the last couple of meetings. Two of them we're going to actually vote in tonight, and another one we're going to do a second reading. These are all policy changes that were really driven by some changes in New York State education law that require that we make these changes to the policy. The first one is, and this one we've read already twice, so we're going to go ahead and vote on it tonight. This is a policy number 8111, opioid overdose prevention. So in an effort to ensure the health and safety of its students and staff, the district will maintain and administer an opioid antagonist in its schools, specifically Narcan. I probably said that wrong. How do you say it?
Narcan.
That's next, otherwise known as Narcan. For use during emergencies, to any student or staff member experiencing a known or suspected opioid overdose regardless of a previous history of opioid abuse prior to participation in an opioid overdose prevention program and providing an opioid antagonist in a school, Board of Education must develop policies consistent with the law and regulation of regulations of New York State. Both Nurse Higgins and Nurse Police have completed the Narcan Treatment Training Program from Southern Westchester Bosse's. They are trained and qualified to administer Narcan if there is an emergency in need and the need arises.
That's your mic. Yeah, something's...
Is something feedbacking?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I'm too close. Okay. So again, we can go ahead and vote this one in now we've already read it twice, so do we have a motion? Resolved, I'm going to read it first. We resolved that the Board of Education adopts policy 8111, opioid overdose prevention as attached to the official minutes of this meeting. Do we have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, any discussion on this? We're all good with that? All in favor? Okay. Similarly, we also have a new policy on payroll. Let me read that one. This policy reflects legal and regulatory changes related to payroll procedures, including the comptroller's five-point plan. In addition, the comptroller has recently promulgated regulations which now, which will now require each, every employer participating in the New York State and local retirement systems to evaluate the status of certain professionals engaged by the employer. So this new policy addresses that. Again, this is policy 6240, if anyone wants to read the details of it. The motion is resolved that the Board of Education adopts policy 6240. Payroll policy is attached to the official minutes of this meeting. Do we have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz, any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Yep. And the next is a second reading, so we're not ready to vote on this yet, but this is a second reading of another policy change that we're required to make related to student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention. There is a revision to a background note to address a recent Supreme Court ruling and updates to the legal citation, citations, what am I saying?
No, I'm telling you, move it back.
Am I doing it again? Okay, I'm sorry. This policy reflects the provisions and requirements of the Dignity for All Students Act and the Commissioner's Regulations implementing it, including changes made under the Crown Act. This specifies that discrimination on the basis of race includes traits historically associated with race, such as their, such as hair texture and hairstyles like braids, locks, and twists. Revisions were made to change wording for his or her to they, their, and changing the wording of shall and should to will and must. The revision also designates the responsibility of implementing and coordinating, coordination of bullying prevention to the District-wide Equity and Wellness Committee to be overseen by the District-wide Dignity Act Coordinator. So again, nothing to vote on here because we're not ready to vote on it yet. This is our second reading, and if you want to read the full details, it's actually three policies, it's broken into three policies. So it's policy 0115, 0115-r, and 0115-e, if you want to read the details. And next time we meet, we'll do a final reading and we'll vote that in. Okay? All right. Our last business of the board item is to adopt a revised 2022-2023 school district calendar. This is due to not using all the snow days, having a light winter, and being able to add some time to our Memorial Day weekend, which is great. So, we resolved that the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, adopts a revised 2022-2023 school district calendar. Do we have a motion? Lori, second. Teraz? Yeah, once again, this is just to move the snow day over and now that, now they'll have...
Yeah, so all the kids that were angry about the snow days when the Westchester head off, they'll be happy. They're five-day weekends.
Yeah, so May 30th is the day that's being given back.
Good things come to those late, right?
Yes, yes.
All in favor? Benefits of having a light winter, and that, not having to shovel the entire, the entire winter. All right, last is, as usual, is our personnel recommendations. We resolved that the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, approves personnel action items A through C as outlined below. Do we have a motion? Teraz, second. Cynthia, any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay. So that brings us to our second recognition of the audience. This could be for any items at all, won't have to be on the agenda. Anybody? Nope?